And welcome to the Shasberry School Board meeting. Uh, the time now is six thirty and we will go right into the citizens' comments. And before we do that, I need to ask this board if there's any non-residents here in the audience that it's okay for them to speak.
Sure.
And I don't have a problem with it.
Non-Shasberry School District residents.
Right, right, okay, good. All right. You're up.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Could you go through some microphones?
Oh, certainly.
We turn out, there we go.
Thank you very much.
This is good. My name is Heather Bullock and my husband and I reside with our two children within the North Bennington School District. It has come to our attention that the Shasberry School Board has allocated thousands of dollars from its school budget for an attorney in consideration of attempting to dissolve part of another school district, specifically those North Bennington residents who reside in the ID District. As you may know, in approximately eighteen seventy, the state legislature and residents implemented a charter that created clear and specific school district boundaries for those Shasberry Town residents who resided in North Bennington. Shasberry School District has no obligation to educate or authority to make decisions for families residing within a neighboring district. During the November thirteenth meeting of the Shasberry School Board, a number of false statements were made pertinent to this discussion. Specifically, Board Member Johnson continually referred to the Village School of North Bennington as a private school and that Shasberry taxpayers are now funding a private school. This statement is false. Nowhere does the Vermont State Legislature indicate that a district must provide educational services within a public school setting. There are approximately ninety-three non-operating school districts within the state of Vermont, to which the North Bennington School District is one, along with other districts serviced by such schools as Burn Burton Academy, Thetford Academy, and St. Johnsbury Academy. Public school boards in these non-operating districts meet their statutory requirement to provide a free and appropriate public education by paying tuition to approved independent or public schools that parents choose to send their children to. It is erroneous to state that Shasberry taxpayers or any taxpayers in Vermont are supporting a private school. Educational property taxes are collected in Shasberry, North Bennington, and school districts across the state. These educational property taxes provide the revenue necessary to ensure resident children receive a publicly funded educational program. In non-operating districts such as North Bennington, parents have choice as to which publicly funded educational program they will send their child to. All property owners within the state of Vermont pay into the Vermont Education Fund. Those funds are allocated within both operating and non-operating districts through the Prudential Committees of each district. Non-operating districts such as North Bennington School District provides school choice to all families within their district. It should be noted that families within the ID District have the choice now to send their children to Shasberry or any public or approved independent school if they feel it is in the best interest of their child. Yet to date, no students who were previously in the North Bennington District are attending Shasberry. Furthermore, it is stated by Shasberry Board members that their school's capacity is three seventy-five. According to the December SVSU Assistant Superintendent's Report, Shasberry's student population has increased to two hundred and forty-one students. Yet when a former Shasberry student relocated to the Shasberry ID District and wanted to finish grammar school in Shasberry, they were told by Shasberry that they would not be able to attend class as the class was at capacity. The report went on to say that the focus on learning should include maintaining smaller class sizes. This appears to be a clear contradiction with a Board member's statement that forcing District One students to attend Shasberry would be good for the students, quote unquote. As a District One parent, I have serious concerns regarding the motives of the Shasberry Board on this issue. It is apparent that this is not in the best interest of the children within the North Bennington School District, and it raises questions as to the true motive behind these aggressive actions against a neighboring district. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Larry.
Could we have a copy of that statement?
Oh, sure, certainly.
Okay. Dave, get it in. Okay, is there anybody else, any audience that wants to speak to that? Yes.
Um, thanks for taking the time to hear us. My name is Beth McLean and I physically live in Shasberry, but mentally and per location under school district, I belong to North Bennington. Um, I'm co-president of our parent-teacher group. I'm also a committee member for the Bennington Chamber of Commerce. I'm a very vested community member and try to do as much as I can for whoever I can, whenever I can. When I taught my ten-year-old how to ride a bike, I did it in North Bennington on the basketball courts. It's a school lot. I didn't do it here or in Cleveland Avenue or in this school lot. When we go sledding, we go to Puddin Hill. We don't go to Chicken Coop Hill. We go to Puddin Hill because that's where my community is. That's where we live closer to. When I go to the market, I go to Powers Market or Northwest or whatever they call it now, North Bennington variety. I don't go to Pollens or Shasberry Country Store. It's not because I dislike those places. It's not because, you know, I haven't frequented them a million times. It's because it's not part of my community. They are amazing places, though. But they're just not my places. I love all Shasberry has to offer and respect what you guys have built and asking the same that you respect what we have built in North Bennington and as that Shasberry district that is up for grabs or whatever it's up for. Shasberry is resourceful and it will figure out what to do if it needs more numbers or I mean, I just don't know what this is about and would love some clarification on that and why we would want to take. If we took my child out of North Bennington right now, it would be devastating to her. She, it's her home. She, you know, it's my home. And I just, I just hope it doesn't happen and I hope you, you know, as a community of Shasberry and as the community of North Bennington, I hope that we can work together to just make sure that this doesn't happen or, you know, clarify why it needs to happen. All right, and thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I just ask both speakers, you both live in District One. Where do you live in District One?
I live on Seventy McCarthy Acres.
McCarthy Acres.
I live on Grandview, about seven houses from the post office.
Thank you.
Yeah. I used to live on Hawks Avenue, so I was in the same predicament, okay? And I still go to Puddin Hill and all those places, so I still like, I'm still, I figure I've always grown up in around North Bennington anyway, so. I used to live on Harrington Road when I was a kid. And anyway, Larry, you want to give a small synopsis of what we're looking at?
Sure.
So, and I'm, before you do that, I'm willing to have a meeting with you people if need be. We make sure that Ray Malinow gets a heads up. He has been getting a heads up. And also Alice Miller, the legislator. So they, anytime we talk about this, they know it. Ray knows it for the Prudential Committee, the whole nine yards, so just, we're not trying to do this in secrecy at all. Go ahead, Larry.
Well, we have been very open about it. The Banner's been in attendance a couple of different times, has not seen a news article in our meeting, I guess. So our intent is to be very open, invite anybody who's interested to have the conversation, and that's what it is. It's an exploratory conversation to see what Shasberry's options are in regard to District One. Okay, we feel an obligation to do that. Remember, we're elected by the citizens of Shasberry and we're expected to take care of those tax dollars as best we can. Obviously, District One is in Shasberry. We're very familiar with what created District One. I think some of you folks will find it very interesting what process actually took place. That's part of the information package that we intend to bring. Like the opportunity to do that in a friendly form, perhaps on neutral ground. Art Whitman has offered to use his facility if that would be more appealing to folks. So that's our intent, is once we get by the election period, our budget period, we'll have new board members and we'll be inviting you all to a meeting where we can sit down and have a good conversation. This is not a new conversation. It started in eighteen seventy, okay? And it will probably continue long past tonight, so.
Anybody else? We will move on then. Thank you. Okay, there's no presentation. Action items, we're going to look at the Treasures Report. Need a motion in a second.
Make the motion, we accept it.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Very none, all in favor? Aye. Okay, the letter, we're taking that off, number two. That's been taken care of. We have the budget transfer request.
That would be, um, that's for more of the freezer repair in the kitchen. Just for FYI, we had also a cloud disposal earlier this month that we'll be looking to transfer some money for that also next meeting.
Jeff, I'm just trying to remember, was it a thousand that we had transferred?
Last month?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was roughly a thousand last month for, I believe that was for the actual breakdown during break, the breakdown of the freezer during break and we lost some. We had to do major repairs during that time.
So is this a second repair or is this a second?
Separate.
Second incident?
Yeah.
Okay. So the, well, when we get to it in the vouchers, there is an expense to Bennington Heating and Cooling. That was for the first?
Yes.
Set of repairs, okay.
Yeah, yep. We paid for paying that. No, we cleared it last month with the transfer.
And which account should we be transferring the money out of?
I believe it's from, trying to remember now, I think it's Transportation for Custodial. It's going to Kitchen Repair. If I remember correctly, we released that a while ago.
Mary confirms.
Is that what it is?
Transportation, and we have, we have a little bit of a surplus there, so.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. I move we approve the request to transfer funds per Jeff's memo.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Now, I have approved audit, but I didn't bring it with me. And I, do we have to do that now or? I just threw it on there because we had, we were supposed to have done it last month, but.
I thought you did it.
I don't know if we approved.
You have not done it. It's appearing in your annual report, so you do need to take a motion to approve a formal audit.
Okay, so I need a motion in a second.
Make the motion.
Second.
All right.
No changes, correct?
Right.
No, there's no changes.
No changes. Okay, all in favor? Aye, okay, that's done. Okay, Tilner Fund Request.
I have a letter here from our library media specialist, Deborah Daly. She is asking for arts and residence funds for Jan Reynolds. She's a woman who's done much adventure, climbing numerous mountains. She's also an author. She comes to schools and does a multimedia show lecture for kids of all ages. She'll do small groups and large groups, depending what we choose. She links it to science, social studies, and English and geography. So that is a request from Tilner Fund to have her come for the day and send some time with the students. I think it'd be a great enrichment opportunity for students at Shasberry.
Okay.
Would this be your one event this year, Jeff? I know you do, frequently do outreach.
Well, we had, we had the poetry guy in the fall. That was our fall one. This would probably be our spring one. We also had some other stuff planned through PTO that, besides this.
Okay.
Make the motion.
Okay, second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Okay, next, a consent agenda. We have, oh, yeah. We have the minutes on the eighth, the ninth, the twenty-third, and the twenty-ninth. Any corrections or changes in those?
Jan's not here, so.
Well, you might have some.
I didn't have any.
Okay. All right, we'll take these all on one motion anyway, so. The warrants, they have number ten fourteen and the amount of forty-five thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. Number ten fifteen, seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine, forty-three. Number two thousand seven, forty-eight thousand, five, five, one, ten cents. Any questions on those?
I have one question.
Yep.
For either Catherine or Mary, perhaps the, on page seven, the last item of the, one that has seven pages, whichever one that is. SDSU hot lunch, there's a couple charges there. Do you have a copy of this?
F D V P.
Does it Fresh Roots and Vegetables program?
Right.
Okay, all right. So we're charged for that and then we're reimbursed.
Yeah, and it's on your treasures, so you have the reimbursement. It's about seven hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, and on page seven, the heating oil. Do we know how much that is a gallon, Mary? I'm just curious.
Can we read this?
Three point one six two three.
Okay. What is it?
Three point one six two three.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, the resignation, I'll do off the consent agenda. Retirement's not, leave of absence, nominations, nominations.
Did everyone hear?
I'm going to do the, there's a resignation we have, and I want to do that off the.
Separately.
Separately on the consent, okay? Sorry. Okay, field trips. On April fourth, we have the State House Montpelier, grade six. And on June sixth, Howe Caverns, New York State, grade six.
Yep.
Okay. So, any questions on the consent agenda with the exception of the resignation, the retirement, whatever?
Resignation.
On the field trip, Fran?
Yeah.
Probably goes to Jeff. Is there anybody from the state themselves that'll join us in that trip?
To Montpelier?
Yeah.
Yeah, they meet us up there.
Okay.
Yeah, the kids go up every year and they meet the, they meet the local legislatures and they give us a tour.
So they'll be meeting our local reps?
Yep.
Good. So all in favor on the consent agenda? Oh, wait a minute, I got to have a motion in a second. Geez, I'm getting ahead of myself here, okay.
I move we accept all the consent agenda.
Here's Dave, okay, you second it.
Except for, except for item three.
Okay. All in favor? Aye, okay. Okay, I'll read this letter. It's to Ms. McClure. It is with a heavy, very heavy heart that I inform you of my decision to resign from my position at Shasberry Elementary School. After much thought, I have decided that I will be staying home to care for my daughter. I want to thank you, the Shasberry Elementary School Board and the Shasberry community for all of the support and opportunities you have given me during my five years of employment. I have truly enjoyed my time at Shasberry Elementary School. If I can be of any assistance during this transition, please let me know. I would be very happy to help in any way that I can. Sincerely, Catherine Hayden. And it is with regret that we accept this. I need a motion.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
With regret.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Okay. All right, next. Okay, policies. We have one policy in the packet, it's number five thousand three, prevention of bullying of students by other students. Any questions, changes on that?
This is for adoption.
I thought it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
See, it didn't have it on here, but.
The reason the changes are highlighted is that it went around for warning, came back from, with some public comment, and the policy committee took it up with, and had an attorney review it, and those changes were made subsequently. So it's here for approval rather than warning again and going back around.
I just want to say thank you for having the changes highlighted, whoever is responsible for doing that.
You're welcome.
And I move we accept. Move we approve.
And Larry seconds it, okay. All in favor? Aye, okay, unanimous. Okay, facilities. Jeff?
The water line, we are working on getting some estimates for some initial planning of what it would look like and cost. We got three quotes from Otter Creek, which is the company that the town works with for all their water work. And the ones that originally, I think we talked to about this, they quoted us for the drafting of the initial plans and then some, possibly some hourly work for services, for engineering services, fifteen hundred dollars originally, and then some added services on there, not to exceed thirty-five hundred, according to them. MSK, which is Mr. Secourt, gave us a quote of eighty-six hundred, fifteen dollars. If the design is given to them, if the work is given to them, it'll be another forty-five hundred for some additional work on top of that. And then Ingles gave us an estimate for the drafting work of the plans for forty-three hundred dollars. So it was basically thirty-five hundred for Otter Creek, eighty-six hundred for MSK, and forty-three hundred for Ingles.
You looking for action on that?
Yes.
Where is Ingles located?
Skenton, New York.
And Otter Creek is Middlebury?
Yes, Middlebury. Yep.
Make the motion, we accept Otter Creek. I think that.
They've been here and they know what the project is.
I think they've done all the work for the town in the water world.
And Jeff, I'm sorry, can you just restate the?
Sure.
The Otter Creek quote and the?
The Otter Creek quote, it was fifteen hundred dollars for the initial outline of the plans, and then they gave a a la carte menu, for lack of a better term, of some other services, principal engineer, managing engineer, and their per hour rate. And Jay's conversation with them was saying they would not exceed thirty-five hundred dollars for the entire planning process. So that's a little bit. So it's still lower than MSK and Ingles.
A second.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear, I didn't hear you. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I wouldn't interrupt, but I was just wondering if Jeff knew why MSK was so much higher than the others? Did they indicate they were doing anything differently?
No, I don't think we, we talk about quotes. No. Didn't give any, they just gave us the initial quote for the design, including field work, study, or survey work permitting, contract bid, and then another forty-five hundred if they get the contract for some more work. And that's the type, or that's the email quote we got from them.
Okay. All righty.
Fran, do you want to review for those viewing if they didn't hear the purpose of the water line while it's being engineered?
Yes. We had a water break out by the fence area by the firehouse, and we didn't know it, been broken for a while, so that pipe is, is pretty rough shape, so what we're going to do is run some pipes from one of our hydrants that's in the schoolyard itself, and that would actually shorten the pipe and it'd be, it would be all-new piping. Plus, at the same time, we would probably do some black topping and everything that we've talked about in the last couple of months, so basically, that's what this is all for. And we've got to update the whole, that whole system, so, anyway. All righty. Okay, principals' report. Yeah, yep. Yeah, it's you and Alice, yeah, for Otter Creek. Otter Creek, yeah, okay.
I emailed the board the school improvement plan slash action plan for two thousand thirteen fifteen. This is a draft of both the school improvement plan that we created with the Green Mountain Star through the state because of our AYP status from last year in mathematics, and our action plan. It's abbreviated version. It does include every single thing, there's different tasks that we have to do to complete in the next couple of years. I didn't include every single task that we have to do, but it is the major components, the goals, responsibilities, the strategies, and then the evidence of effectiveness for each one of those goals. I added a highlight section at the very end to kind of summarize what the plan was about, which is looking at student data, doing interventions and enrichment around that data for all our kids, doing progress monitoring throughout the year, and then constantly reassessing where the students are at, professional development for the staff around the MTSS system, which we started last month during in-service, and around social-emotional learning as well. And, and with the ultimate goal of obviously improving student achievement in all areas, but particularly in mathematics because of our identification last year and the NECAP testing. So this is a draft. I would like to bring this to the board for approval next month, give you guys some time to look at it and digest it a little bit, and then go from there. Do you have any questions?
Excuse me, Fran. Jeff, could you go through the process very quickly of how staff, teaching staff are involved, staff are involved in the development of the action plan?
So, we created a, first we created a Green Mountain Star team, which is the online program used by the state when a school is identified for various reasons. And that team looked at a number of indicators for the state under, I think it was five different areas. And we chose an indicator, or two indicators from each area, I think it was three in one area. And then we created some goals around those indicators and some tasks to meet those goals that stretch from pretty much this year until June two thousand fifteen, with the ultimate goal of meeting the goals stated here under the SMART goals, which are improving mathematics scores and map testing and ANEESWAP testing and going from there. The big, the big piece is the MTSS system, the multi-tiered system of supports that we're adopting. We're working on that now, creating a schedule that makes that more friendly for teachers next year. And that's what that is, is students fall into different tiers compared to their ability level, and we give interventions depending on where the student falls, trying to get them to where they need to be. It all starts with a really good first instruction from teachers and then interventions from there, or enrichment. If students are succeeding, they could have the opportunity for some enrichment activities as well, and.
That's the part I wanted to note. I think one of the unique things in how the teachers identified the indicators and the goals is that they're not just looking at performance levels of students who need intervention for what we used to call remedial purposes, but they're also looking at acceleration and enrichment, acceleration. And I think that's unique to this action plan, even though, you know, it's stated clearly in this action plan, even though it's the intent of others, it's actually stated in your choice of indicators and your goals. And I think that's, that's good because it's looking at all children. So my compliments to the staff.
If I had any questions?
Ray has some next month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Moving on then, NECAP scores for the fall of two thousand thirteen were released last week, I believe. I do have some reports to share with you all.
Yep, sure, thank you.
So the first one is the reading, I'm sorry, it's math. The top cover page is the state report as far as how we did as a school in mathematics. You will notice that two thousand thirteen, if you look under all students, we had a hundred and sixty-seven students tested. The first line is sixteen percent is passing with proficiency with distinction, and then the next one is proficient, and then it's partially proficient and substantially proficient from there. We had fifty-seven percent pass with proficiency or proficient with, proficient with distinction, excuse me. That is, I believe, five percent lower than it was last year. And the second page is actually a chart of our data compared to the state data. A little caveat to that is there, there were roughly, I think, were it forty-some schools that did not take this test, Catherine?
Because of?
Because of S-Back piloting? Yeah.
Oh, yes, because they were piloting.
Yeah, there was, there was roughly forty-some schools that did not take NECAP data, NECAP tests this year because they're piloting the S-Back test, which we'll be taking next spring. So the state data is missing a substantial amount of students.
Is it missing students from schools that tended to perform?
Is it missing students from schools that tended to perform well?
I think we, we need to, yeah, we'll get some more information about that.
Good question.
Because I don't think, I think the significance of that's going to show up later. But we'll want to get the details of it, David. It's a good question. The other thing I want to make sure that people remember is that the common level of, the, the New England Common Assessment Program is a test that compares grade level to grade level to grade level every year. So they're looking at third grade, third grade, third grade, third grade, and you have students moving in and out of those grades. So you have to remember that it's not looking at individual student achievement over time. What it's doing is looking at the cohort in third grade. So it really gives us information on our curriculum. And what I can remind you all is that within our strategic investments in our budget planning for next year, the SU has budgeted with the teacher committee for textbook selection and resource selection for mathematics, a replacement for our current resources which were purchased in two thousand. So these new materials will be aligned with the Common Core and very important as we move instruction forward to that. And I think when you see a dip like the one in two thousand and eleven, it, it could be a number of factors, but it could be the composition of the class as well as the, I think we had a storm then, didn't we? But the other, the other thing to remember is that the positive thing about these national assessments is that for the first time, scores were disaggregated by population, by poverty, by special education, as long as there were more than a certain number in that cohort. In, in former days, we used to use standardized testing. And that testing usually was normed within a ten-year period of administering the test. And you only looked at your average scores to the normed samples. So it really didn't show you where your specialized populations or populations in need were progressing. And so for all the, the criticism that we give it, the one thing it did help us with was look at sub, sub-populations.
This is the, the next one is the, the reading scores for this year. We did go up one percent in reading from seventy-three to seventy-four percent. So we performed a little better there. Again, the second page is compared to the state average with the caveat that there are some students missing for that, but we were four percent over the state average. So we did, we did fairly well in the reading area.
Yeah, you're really holding.
What was the one that you just said we were down five percent?
That would be mathematics. And it should be known that this is the last kneecap testing we're taking. Come a year from now, next two thousand fifteen spring, we're taking the S-Back test, which is a different test aligned with the Common Core. So this is the last year of the kneecap.
And I see that we performed above the state average in reading?
Yes, yep.
For the first time?
So the staff and I will be looking at this more carefully. We have, we have professional learning communities in both reading, writing, and mathematics that will look at this data. We can look at it as far as taking, as Ms. Mcclair said, about students in poverty and those who are not in poverty. We can look at certain areas within mathematics that we did, maybe performed better than others or, or writing and reading for that matter, and where we've formed others. And we'll be looking at those strengths and those challenges that we have. Obviously, our school plan is related to mathematics, but it's also going to help out with reading and literacy as well. It's not going to be just mathematics, so.
Do we know now, and maybe it's too early to say, but even though our reading score has improved when the time comes around later in the fall for somebody to tell us whether we made adequate progress or not, will we have made it in reading?
It's hard to say.
But we might, we may not, though, even though we're a great run-up.
Yeah, there are people that are trying to calculate prior to that release, but...
When does that happen, Catherine?
Um, usually.
September?
It changes. Unfortunately, it's, yeah, it was in August last year, but I think it was delayed, you know, we expect. I think the good news, again, you know, as you look at the national assessments and how a state wants to use them, the new S-Back will be a spring test. So we'll actually have a time period in which students will not be tested in the fall. And then they'll start testing in the spring and start a spring to spring to spring. What teachers prefer usually about a spring is that you're not getting that summer, summer break and, and you're seeing where they're ending to start up again in the fall. And hopefully, they'll have them before school starts if they're given in the spring. But we use, as you know, the measures of academic progress, the MAPS. And Jeff has also talked about focus monitoring under a AMES web. Yeah, so there, you know, we use multiple measures, and I, I know that's confusing because we like to have one measure that we see achievement. But right now, we're using multiple measures for different purposes. And I think that when you report out on some of those others, it would be good to be very clear about what the purposes are for those as we're looking, as we're looking forward. I do know that there is, and I've mentioned this before at other boards, there is some talk among superintendents and among others in the state about whether or not the state should continue to sign up for the S-Back. If you remember, Vermont was well ahead of many other states in the accountability movement with local assessments. Portfolio, teachers will remember the portfolio assessments that used to be done and then benchmarked within the SU. Now, those have gone by the wayside with the national testing, but there's still some done locally in the schools, however.
So does the, I mean, does, does the comment you just made then, does the state, the state has the authority to decide on behalf of the districts what testing is done?
Well, it's under the federal no child left behind law. And I don't know, people are watching New York State, see what happens.
Does an individual district have the option of opting out?
Not exactly. I, I, I know that unfortunately, what happens is the federal funding is tied to it so that a lot of people, they haven't said that funding would be withdrawn if you didn't participate. But there's so many federal regulations on the state and money that flows through the state from the federal government back to us. But we can get more information about that.
I'd be curious to know, yeah, honestly. You know, not speaking for the rest of the board, but...
Right now, you can't for school approval. It's part of the state requirement.
Megan?
Catherine, I have a question regarding that. I have several friends that are educators in other states, and they're actually protesting standardized tests. And I guess I'm wondering, as a parent, if I didn't want my child to take it, can I opt them out?
I think other states are exactly doing that. And just, I'm actually going to be making an appointment with the new Secretary of Education because there are a number of people that continue to call the kneecap and the S-Back standardized tests. And either they've changed the definition of standardized tests because a standardized test is usually one in which you norm, do a norming sample, and then you're comparing your students to the norming sample. Here, you're comparing to a standard. So it's not a, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing your use of it. I'm just using the opportunity to discuss it. This is an assessment to standards, yeah. But I, I want to make sure that I'm not wrong in that because the testing community may have actually changed the definition of what a standardized test is. But there are parents who, who are not here in the supervisor union that I know. But in New York State, there are many parents, and I think in Connecticut as well, who have requested that their students not participate. The difficulty is, for the school district, is they're still counted, and so it affects the scoring. So if, you know, if you, if you pull out so many, you know, your, your scores are affected. The, the other thing is in, in the previous accountability requirements that were state-driven and not federal-driven. The state's accountability system, you found local school districts actually publicizing decisions they made. For example, when I, I hate to say this when I was in New Hampshire, but the eleventh, the test on US history under that accountability system in New Hampshire at that time, which is now decades ago, was set at tenth grade. But the curriculum across the state called for US history to be taught in eleventh and twelfth. So boards would say, we choose not to move our coursework earlier to ninth and tenth grade in order to meet the test because we feel it belongs in eleventh and twelfth. And so they would publicly make a decision that they were not going to make a curricular change in order to meet the testing requirement. So it's a, you know, the testing and assessment area for public schools is, I think, well-publicized with concerns. And right now, this is a system that we're required to follow from the state. But we'll get more information about it, and you should follow the developments. The Secretary of Education right now is also talking about looking at the other areas that Vermont has said they will assess and they are not, physical education, the arts. And there was one other, and I, I can't remember right now what it was.
Catherine, once the other schools in the district have had a chance to review the same information, will you be giving us a comparison?
Yes, we'll do an SU report on the results. And I, we will, I don't, I don't know if in the past we've done a comparison at the SU board level, but let me look back, and it's certainly something, you know, to be discussed. You have to, it's hard to do that because you want to...
I understand that.
Yeah, how you're, how are, well, it's not just, you know, the idea that we want a common curriculum that everyone's implementing, and we want all of our students to progress. But when you take the SU and do a comparison, I guess I'm changing the subject. I just realized, sorry. I was thinking of the comparison of Shaftesbury to the SU result. You have to take Shaftesbury, you know, out of it, yeah, yeah. So, but let me talk with, with Pat Conway, who works with Donna Lee on these and...
One other question. I know we do map testing as well. Is there a component within the map testing program that would be comparable to this so that we could actually see, we're, we're doing testing it on the, with the map program, and we're doing testing with a kneecap program? I'm interested in what the, the variance in those results might be.
Actually, it can be done in the fact that the map testing still does an anticipatory result of how your students are going to do on the kneecap. And they are now working to start to align it to Common Core. So we could go backwards in time and look at how, how each, how your students did in relation to how map predicted they would do. And I can just tell you informally that the predictions have been fairly accurate. But the thing about map testing is it follows children over time, so you can see the growth of that child. And the other thing, I think, we know from our supervisor union report that if we take the third grade or A grade in the kneecap and we follow that grade as they go to fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, we're actually seeing increases in the number of students in proficiency. So we are seeing, but that's not how the state reports them.
Catherine, I just want to go back again. I'm speaking for myself here, not for the rest of the board. But I've heard principals and teachers say that our students are, you know, tested, standardized, tested to within inch of their life. And I think this would be a great opportunity for the board to educate itself on what exactly the stakes are. So with the no child left behind expiring at the end of the year, and this, this regiment of testing going away, if map testing, in fact, if the results of map testing mirror the kneecap testing, is it really necessary to have, you know, another whole different battery of tests? So I thank, I encourage you, thank you to bring back answers on what, you know, what options might be.
Yeah, and the options. I can tell you that when the kneecap was just being formulated and the tri-state area got together to look at what kind of assessment they would do, there was actually a move to put the map testing in instead and use that, but it fell by the wayside.
Anybody else?
Jeff? I was hoping I'd hear the answer from David's question, but why are we, why do we have map testing and kneecap testing?
Well, we do map testing because it actually is, is more frequent, and we can follow the children's growth over time, so we can monitor their growth. And the teachers get the results in forty-eight hours. So when they're doing performance grouping, whether it's within their classroom or between classrooms, they can actually move those students around toward their performance, their performance level and then focus that instruction very carefully and then monitor the growth. So with the kneecap, you're waiting months and months and months and months for that data to come, to come in.
So it sounds like the answer is map testing is what we do to teach us how to teach our kids. And kneecap is something that's ordered up by outside agencies for us to do.
I, I think, you know, certainly the kneecap is an outside agency requirement. And that's, gives us information programmatically on the curriculum because it's done grade level to grade level to grade level. And the map allows us to follow those children individually. AMES web, which is being, and this answers your question. AMES web, which is being implemented across the supervisor union now, gives even more instant monitoring and more frequent monitoring so that instruction can be tailored because it really helps assist the teachers in, in, in getting more monitoring data.
Much more diagnostic.
And the S-Back is going to replace kneecap?
Yes.
But I guess the S-Back is not going to give us the kind of information that we need to do our job like map testing.
Well, it, 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 some people predict it'll be better than the kneecap because, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, the S-Back is, is first of all, very electronic-based. So it's really important that you've kept your computer access up for all of your students. Many of the questions will actually have visual movement and visual things on the screen that the students will need to interact with. And apparently, the questioning is actually going to match the performance level of the students. So if they go in to answer a question, it's actually going, like Compass Learning Odyssey, it's going to adjust to where the student's success level is. So it'll be able to pinpoint for the teachers, the, what we call the instructional level or the optimal level for teachers' instruction. And it will allow them to see whether students are accelerated or need intervention along with, you know, the AMES web. So whether that will replace maps or will find other problems with it and stay with the maps, I don't know. It's a future question. But to answer David's...
Is there hope that we might eliminate maps in favor of the one mandated S-Back?
Well, let's see what it tells us. I think we want some time to see what it looks like, what, what the teachers feel about it. And to answer your question, which I didn't answer, yes, teachers feel that a lot of time is spent on assessment and that we lose that time for other subject areas. I know that social studies is one that teachers, you know, have integrated as best they can and, and well, in many cases, into literacy training, literacy instruction. But there are areas, you know, you're, you're, the thought is that emphasizing the literacy and the math will propel science and social studies and all those other areas for higher achievement.
Just one of the...
Please add, Jeff, any of the teachers that want to either correct me or supplement what I'm saying.
That's my understanding of S-Back also, that it's electronic, it's going to adjust to the student as they answer questions to reach at their level, where the kneecap is paper and pencil and every chance it's the same.
Will we get the results back?
Much more quickly. Because it's electronic-based.
Yeah, and we should get answers and results from these piloting, forty-three piloting schools. We're going to want to know how, how they felt about it. And I'm sure the teachers, as they talk with the teachers from those schools will also hear.
It's one of the ironies, I think, of the current system is that, and we don't have them today because of the spring test, but the science scores.
Yes.
If you look at our, not, not just SVSU, but statewide, the, the scores tend to be very low. The, the percentage of students who score with distinction... The, the percentage of students who score with distinction is consistently one percent or two percent, year after year, at all grade levels, which, and it suggests anyway that, um, we're not teaching our students the science that they're expected to know. And I suspect it's because the focus isn't on science, the focus is on, we have to do well on math, we have to do well on writing and reading because those are the, those are the areas that are wrapped into adequate yearly progress.
Yeah, the science as well, um, although Vermont is one of the few states that have adopted the, um, the revised national standards with, uh, next generation, uh, next generation standards, um, they haven't been implemented. And I think what you'll see is that as we move from mathematics, um, resource purchasing, um, with the teacher input, um, we will move into literacy next and then, um, and science, because science is also something that we need to, um, look at our resources. They're old, I mean, we, we've really, we're in economic times that have been very difficult for the last, what, seven years, and we're, we're well behind in, in, um, providing those resources.
Anybody?
Yep. North Bennington, by virtue of their status, um, do they get to do less testing?
I, you know, I, I think that is, uh, definitely a question I can follow up on, because my understanding was their application for the village school, if that's what you're asking specifically about the village school. Their application actually said they would take the kneecap, but I'm not, I saw a newspaper article after that saying that, implying that they would not. So I don't know if they took it or not, but I can follow up, um, as far as I know, their application said that they would.
Okay, Jeff.
All right, finish up, um, on two occasions, both last Wednesday and this Wednesday, we tried to have our, our winter walk to school day. We've had a fall walk to school day, um, last fall, we had last spring, we had a spring walk to school day, we were trying to do a winter walk to school day with, um, Tim Skoggins doing most of the organizing and, um, and managing of that. We tried last week, we had a, we had a snow day, I believe, um, got a big storm, we tried this morning, we tried, we, I held off as long as we could. I woke up, it was minus fourteen, I drove in the driveway this morning, so I had to call it. Sorry, Mr. Johnson, but it's just a little too cold, so, uh.
We were ready, Jeff, we were.
You, you were ready, yeah.
We were ready.
You were ready. Somebody said you're gonna have to be on your bike and everything, I brought mine.
Yeah, okay. Next, next, I'll be here next Wednesday.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so, un- unfortunately, we did not get it off this winter, but we will try again, and I'm sure it'll be successful in the spring. Do you wanna say anything about that?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody, starting with, with Jeff for the support that, uh, the school and the board and, and the town are, are providing to us with the Safe Routes to School program. Jeff has been, uh, as you probably would expect, uh, all on board, and has been a big help getting, uh, bus routes rerouted so that kids could be dropped off to do the walks. And, uh, this morning, for this walk, we had, uh, Fran Kenny was there, and Larry Johnson was there, uh, the banner Derek Carson was there, um, Mitch Race from the Select Board was there, these are all people that didn't get the announce, the, uh, their email at seven o'clock saying it was canceled. Karen Melinger also on the Select Board was planning to be there, but, uh, she's more high-tech than these guys, so she, she knew she didn't have to get out of bed. But, um, I've been encouraged, and I, I, I really appreciate, uh, the, the support we've gotten from everybody, town, uh, Select Board, kid school, and, uh, bringing this, uh, this Safe Routes program to our school.
We appreciate your help, being organized. I do wanna mention, we also had two events, um, earlier this week, we had a, a family fun game night on Monday night, which was actually a math night. Um, we had a number of teachers, every grade level came and had a table with a different ma- math game. Uh, students were encouraged to come with their families, they got a math packet with some games to take home. Um, it was, for our first, first time, it was hugely successful, the parking lot was full, I don't know what the numbers were, we didn't count going in, but, um, we gave away quite a pack, quite a few packets, it was very successful. Veronica Brack was our, our 3rd grade teacher, was instrumental in getting that off the ground and, uh, organizing that with, with the help of, um, some funds from, uh, from Central and the Title Program, I believe, or Title Fund. And we also had, um, our kindergarten gymnastics demonstration last night, which is an annual event Mr. Harrington does with the kindergarteners. They come in with their families, and he does a whole gymnastics routine, uh, show for the parents, including, and actually includes the parents in the show. It was, it was a really good time, it was my first time seeing it, uh, it was, I had a blast, it was a really good time watching the kindergarteners go through the different routines. So I wanna, I'll thank Mr. Harrington for all the work there also.
All set?
That's good.
Okay, Catherine.
There've been a number of legislative, um, meetings, and some of you have attended them, um, we, uh, had one on February 3rd. Uh, we discussed with the legislators actually reducing the number of legislative breakfasts that we hold because they are inundated, and they actually are very, very visible, they go to every single event they can try, they can attend, they go to many, many legislative meetings, um, UCS has held one recently, um, there was also two regional superintendent legislative meetings this, uh, year already, um, right now, um, we're trying very hard to have the conversation around the opiate addictions and prescription drug addictions be a wider, uh, discussion than simply, um, having clinics to assist, um, in recovery and emergency beds, um, and in hospitals and other locations to start to include conversations about the effects on children, because whether they are born of addicted, uh, mothers or live in homes where such abuse, um, is going on, you know, we, we are dealing with those, um, effects, whether they're traumatic effects, um, or cognitive development effects, um, in the schools. And so, um, we're hoping that that conversation is wider, but the attention given to it by Dick Sears and others certainly, um, noted nationally, actually. Uh, I think there are three states that have, um, really come out loudly. There are also the usual, um, uh, discussions around governance, um, consolidating ESUs, consolidating districts. Um, the House Ed Committee is hearing, um, testimony this week on governance. There are also, uh, we're following, um, um, other bills, uh, related to particular populations. There was a bill that was passed, uh, last year that supported, um, resources to students with autism, um, but there really was no funding behind it. Um, and this year, we're very concerned that, uh, private insurance companies are providing family support outside of school, family support for, uh, programs, ABA training for, uh, autistic students, um, in their homes, um, but Medicaid is not. And there's a licensing, uh, regulation that has prevented that, so they, we have asked legislators to take up that issue. Karen Brunel's been very, very instrumental in, uh, talking with the, um, uh, Department's Health, Health and Family Services Department and, um, with legislators about that, um. We will have a March legislative meeting, and it will either be the 10th or the 24th, um, the legislators asked specifically to wait until after the town votes to, um, um, have that meeting rather than what we normally would have it is March 3rd. I think that's it for right now.
Okay. All righty. The only thing I had is, uh, I did, uh, make it to Mike Foley's house, he took me on a tour. He does have that contract that he wanted from TAM, so I, I did hand deliver that to him. Um, I'm thinking about, we've had some talks, not at the, not at the board itself, but, uh, tuitioning out policy. We've had some conversation about that, that might, uh, uh, maybe we'll put that on the next month's agenda, I don't know, but, uh, just to throw that out there. And I, I'm seeing things, uh, there's, um, uh, educational program on Sundays, and I, and I don't know what channel it is. Uh, it's about flipping the classroom.
Yes.
And, and they, they do the work with the students, I mean, I, I, I don't know, I was gonna, we have teachers in the audience here, so I said, is that a good idea, is, I mean, and then they watch the, um, video from their teacher about the instructions, but they basically, during the day, to help them get their grades up, I mean, is, that something we're trying or doing, or you don't wanna do it?
Do you wanna, I can tell you.
Anybody.
I, I, let me, let me do an intro.
Okay.
What a flipped classroom is, and Frank Barnes is the, uh, is, is our central office authority on this, um, he's done it. What it, what it means is that the initial instruction is given to the students in where we used to give homework. So homework traditionally is practicing what you've learned in class, but because of all of our, not all of our, but we have great access to computers, and that is one of the, the issues that comes up, is does every child have access? Um, they don't, so that's a, an issue, but, um, technically, the instruction, first instruction is given electronically, either through video or other kinds of graphics in a electronic system, or even, um, you know, a teacher might construction, construct a lesson that they would send home as initial instruction, and then they use the classroom period to do the application and practice. And the, the thinking there is, um, because, uh, of the electronic access and motivation that students can grasp, um, grasp new work perhaps at their own rate more quickly and accelerate, and then when they're in class, the teacher can actually, um, provide that intervention in a more timely manner, they're not at home doing the math problems incorrectly ten times, and, you know, and getting that reinforced, the practice and applications actually in the classroom. So I don't know if Shaftesbury teachers have tried this, or what opinion they would have on it, but that is the concept.
Okay, uh, that's basically all I had, um, the annual floor meeting is Monday, March 3rd, at six thirty PM here in the, uh, gym. Next meeting would be Wednesday, March 12th, here in the library, and you have your budget status report and your SVSU and student enrollment enclosed, yes, Larry?
We just, uh, hit the committee so that we've all been busy attending, um.
Committee reports.
Committee reports.
I noticed it wasn't on there, right?
Well, no, for a reason, I wanted a short meeting, but go ahead.
Okay.
We'll add it to your agenda, some of the agendas actually have, uh, we'll add it to yours.
So we had one policy committee, uh, I filled in for Pat on that, uh, um, bulk of the discussion centered around, uh, Policy Number Forty Twenty, which is appointments of administrators, and that was a pretty, pretty intense conversation, not, not controversial or, or, it was just, uh, an interesting, uh, discussion, so, we'll see what comes out of that.
Is that a new policy there, or a revision?
No, this is, uh, this is talk of a revision, it's been in place, uh, since two thousand four, I believe, Dave. And, uh, there's some things, because we're going through the, the, the search presently for superintendent, there are, uh, things that have become, um, apparent that aren't addressed in the policy, and so I think folks are just saying, this is a good time to take a look at it while it's fresh and, and, uh, everybody's, uh, interested in doing that, so, um, I'm sure you'll be hearing more of that one. Search committee, uh, I think we've had our final, uh, committee meeting, and it will now go to the SVSU board, uh, as early as tomorrow, the results of that, of the finding of the committee, and from that, uh, the board will be, um, releasing whatever information they choose to, so. Personnel committee meetings, there's been a couple of those, uh, job descriptions, uh, have been talked about with regards to a couple of new, uh, new positions that, uh, have been suggested. And Fran and I atten- attended a, uh, a very interesting debate up in Manchester, Dave brought it to our attention, uh, it was, uh, a debate between, uh, people who advocate, advocate for, uh, independent slash private schools, uh, and, uh, public schools. And, uh, in fact, there's a third one, I believe it's, uh, later this week up in Mount Kilior. So that was a very enlightening, uh, couple hours. That's it. Well, Steve had, Dave, you had a topic.
Uh, meetings?
Yeah.
Uh, committee meetings?
No?
No.
You're up though?
Okay, anybody else, anybody in the audience, hearing none, motion to adjourn.
To move.
Okay, Larry, you second it, okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
We're done.